This meeting back to order. Okay, moving on to boarded administration and planning. We have approval of regular board meeting minutes for last month, March 14, 2024. Any corrections? Okay, seeing no corrections. Board meeting minutes for March would be filed. Moving on to resolution establishing a pool lower range training facility permitted action, interaction group. Trey?
Yes, so I drafted this resolution in response to what I believe to be a need for the board. We are bound by the sunshine law, which means all official business that is not specifically delegated through a permitted interaction group must happen at an open public meeting. And so those rules do not only apply for current business like resolutions that we have on the books now. They are also related to business that we've, we've had in the past and business that we are likely to have in the near future. And so recognizing that we are receiving consistent updates on the lower range. We already have a resolution that's been passed on this. We are likely to see it in our official capacity as a board again. Really, the only options available to us for things like site visits and, you know, official meetings is either to send no more than two people or to simply have them as meetings of this board or of the Military Affairs Committee. So I'm not particular about any of those solutions, but the sunshine law is the law. And the penalties are steep. Not only could you lose your position on the board if you're found, but it's actually a misdemeanor. So not that it's enforced all that often against neighborhood boards, but I think it's important for us to follow the law to the best of our abilities. And so that's what this permitted interaction group seeks to do. Specifically, there are a couple of be it resolves down at the bottom that specify what the powers of this group are. Permitted interaction groups are designed to allow board members in their official capacity to, to attend and to participate in things like meetings and presentations and whatnot that are not feasible for a public meeting. And so a good example of this was the sampling a month or a couple of months ago where we were invited as board members, but there was kind of a weird workaround with the sunshine law because we weren't supposed to be invited as a board in our official capacity. And we couldn't hold an open meeting on the grounds of the pool lower range while the sampling was going on. So what should have happened ideally is that we had a permitted interaction group that was delegated the ability to go and supervise that and then to report back to the whole board at the following meeting. All right, I'm happy to answer any, any questions. I'm not an expert on the sunshine law, but I did talk to the neighborhood commission to make sure that I was getting this right for the resolution.
And one quick comment about the pig. For the permitted interaction group, when the permitted interaction group reports at whatever future meeting they decide to report on, that group then gets dissolved. This isn't an ongoing reporting group. So for example, if the pig decided to get all research or whatever done and report at the next meeting, the pig dissolves at that meeting. If it's three months from now, four months from now, so on and so forth, whenever it reports, there's no more pig.
Okay, any other questions? Alex, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks for drafting that. And I'm not, if, if we as a board think that that's the way to go, I don't have a problem with it. I guess the, the single reporting option I wasn't aware of, I thought, I think would be more beneficial if, if that did exist to be an ongoing thing. So that kind of changes a little bit my perspective on things. I did have a couple of things about the resolution that you wrote. Thanks for drafting that up. I'm sure that took some time. One is I know that the, the resolution includes some background on, on the testing that's happening right now or recently by MCBH. And I think if we're going to have a resolution, it should include more background that includes surf rider testing and things of that nature, not just what recently happened. Cause that's what it references the previous resolution and that previous resolution dealt with a lot of different things, right? Secondly, I think that in that same vein is that that resolution or this resolution is too narrow. The issues at Pualoa at the, at the shooting range aren't just lead. And so if we're going to have a pig, maybe in this case now it's just a single reporting thing. Maybe it can be led focus, but when I was thinking of this as an interaction group in general, it should be about all the themes, about noise pollution, about surface danger zone issues for airlines, for public in the park, for evacuation route limitations, for recreation limitations, all those things should go in that if we're going to have it. And thirdly, the last thing I would say is that there is be it resolves a section of that that talks about, I'm, I'm on a wrap up here, but talks about the individuals nominating and then disclosing afterwards. Once they're elected to disclose any conflict of interest, and I don't think it should work that way. I think if you're interested in being on that group, you should raise your hand, so to speak. You should state if you have any conflicts of interest. I'm particularly thinking about if you receive monetary compensation from the military. I see that as a conflict of interest, so I think that that's one that should be highlighted. And I think that once that's out there and we have a discussion, then we would vote on who should be on that page.
Hey, John, you got something?
Uh, yeah, just so in that vein, remember Alex, it seems to me like maybe a permitted interaction group is not the way to go. I think the Military Affairs Committee might be the better way if we want to have it ongoing. And the Military Affairs Committee could present regular standard reports. And, and in that regard, any member of the community can join that committee as well, as well as subcommittees. That, that seems to me like the fair thing to do. And, but we could use the resolution as a backdrop or as a charter.
Yeah, yeah. And, and after discussing it with the neighborhood commission, I'm, I'm very much open to that. I had thought prior to working it out with the commission that it could serve as a standing body. And, and you know, we could assign it work and it would come back. There are certain things where permitted interaction group might be useful. They are designed to allow for things like site visits and whatnot. And so I think if we get to that point, then, then it might make sense to, you know, dust this off and use it again. But I'm very much open to delegating business to the Military Affairs Committee, letting them take it up in the open with, with community members and, and working that way.
I think it's important to note that if we do, I don't want to use a word out of, out of context relegated to the Military Affairs Committee. We have to draft up an agenda, as you're probably aware, for each, each particular interaction that the committee meets. And it has to be done in advance in accord with the sunshine law.
Okay, we're going to take Jana real quick and we're going to, excuse me, we're going to start moving on. It was eight o'clock. Jana, go ahead.
Everyone, sorry, I don't think I got to introduce myself. Jana over here, I just wanted to say, I think the resolution for a pig is actually kind of a good idea. It allows us to be able to kind of move forward with our progress regarding PRTF. And like what Trey was saying, it does allow you to do things like site visits and also just have discussions with the relative community members outside of the board. And so I was wondering if there's a possibility to actually put into the resolution a general timeframe of how long we could have this PIG. And then when it would dissolve rather than it just being dissolved every time it reports to the group. Cause I've had experience actually working in a pig with the border regions of the university. And they had reported to the board multiple times, but they didn't dissolve right away. It was just, they created the pig and then there was a certain timeframe of when they would like to have this pig for a while. And then it would just dissolve at the last time that they would report to the board before they would move on with their business after collecting whatever information they needed from it. So I'm just wondering if that's to kind of resolve that whole like single reporting issue and it resolving, but also allowing our board to be able to progress with the issues regarding PRTF by having a pig, but just establishing like a timeframe or something for that.
I would have to clarify, I don't know if establishing a timeframe on the reso would negate that dissolving rule just because that's something not necessarily in the neighborhood plan, but more so on the side of OIP. So I would have to clarify if specifying that would kind of negate that. But I'll clarify that and make sure that goes out first thing tomorrow.
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess what we'll table this. Okay, we'll table this. You guys all good with it? All right, get moving on. Moving on to presentations, everyone we did see.
Good evening, board chair, members of the board and everyone here, residents. My name is Gail Persels and I'm the director of Weed and Seed Hawaii. And Corporal Pagan and I would like to kind of give you an update of what we've been doing. And as we move forward, things, there'll be some changes and I think it's a good positive change, but it, it involves the site three. So just to give you a little bit of an overview of those who are not familiar of who we are, we are yes, the next, next. You know, we, we started as a, Weed and Seed started as a national program under the Department of Justice. And it was introduced to us in 1998 by the US Attorney Steve Arm. So in 1998, we first started with the first site, which is Kalihipalawa. And then we extended in 2003 to Chinatown, parts of Alamoada and Sherona Street area. Then on site two, we have Waipahu. And then we became the third site, the Ever Ever Beach community. I just want to, you know, when we were under the Department of Justice, it took a lot of hard work for the community to be recognized and to be designated as a weed and seed site. So we're very proud that we, in Hawaii, we had three sites. And, and as of today, we just could celebrate our 25th year. Last year, we continue to sustain the three sites and continue to provide services. In 2011, the national program ended and the, all the existing weed and seed sites naturally either had to re-leave or we, we accept a brand name for themselves or continue working under a, another nonprofit. Here in Hawaii, at that time, our US Attorney Florida Kukui fought for us with the Department of Justice to keep, allow us to keep the brand name. So we were very successful doing that. With that, she, she put Weed and Seed as her outreach program under the United States Attorney's Office here in Hawaii. And since then, after her term was over, you know, we had Kenji Price and now Honorable Claire Connors, who continues to support us as their outreach program. What do we do as their outreach program? We just had our Celebrate Safe Communities in March. And so these are the types of programs that we do. We link, we involve her at many of our events that she comes out to support. And then in 2011, 17, we became, after being administered by the YMCA of Honolulu for many years, we became our own nonprofit organization. And so we're very, we're very proud that we have made a big step. It's hard work, but we've been very successful in sustaining ourselves. So what we're trying to do is we, we do have steering committees in each of our sites. We have a board member, a board of directors also because of our nonprofit. But these are, this is the mission and vision statement that we try to follow. And it's pretty much collaborating with our communities, looking at the needs of each community and working on programs that will help to address the, the issues. Corporal Pagan, who is also on our steering committee and also on our board, you know, shared some of the concerns in certain areas that's outside of Ever, Ever Beach. And the steering committee, after discussion agreed, we, we approached it to the board. So this is where we are today to, to present it to you at the board, at board level. So I'm going to have him explain the expansion part.
So basically the, the current sites forever three, ever. Weed and Seed Site Three generally starts at where Renton Road begins. So Renton Road, south, up into Ever Beach Park or Pulo Beach Park. Everything except for Iroquois Point is, is the current weed and seed boundaries. What we have decided to do based on what we felt was a need in the Barbers Point Kalailoa area was we wanted to extend the boundaries into that area. By extending the boundaries, we can work with our community partners. You know, and the DHHL and the other businesses that are now developing in Kalailoa. That, that are developing within Kalailoa, working with them to see how we can address some of the needs of our homeless shelters, our homeless youth, our homeless communities, as well as the businesses that are, are developing out there that may have issues. So the expansion that we're looking for is going to go basically from Roosevelt Road into Barbers Point all the way to Coppely Parkway, the VA Center. So everything except Kamakana Lee. We didn't want to get into the, the mall shopping area because then everybody would be restricted from the island. So we don't want to do that. But, um, so we did want to present that to the board, hopefully get you guys blessed and understanding that, you know, we're not, we don't want to, we're not trying to create a new site. We're just trying to expand the boundaries that we, that we have and, and hope that by reaching out to that area and our partners, it'll help further weed and seeds reach into the community, not just in Kalailoa, but in Ever Beach, Waipahu, Chinatown and downtown and stuff like that. The next one is just a map that we took from our HPD, Honolulu PD.org website, the crime mapping. So if you can see where Roosevelt is, there, there's not a whole bunch of crime that's currently happening in that area. So we're hoping that this is going to help us where we can focus a lot on the seeding programs with the shelters and the communities that are in there and stuff like that. You know, we do have an area in there that's, it's been pretty occupied by some of our residentee challenged citizens and stuff like that. So we're hoping that this will allow us to, to push into there and see what we can do to remedy that situation, whether it's helping them, helping the businesses and helping the landowners and stuff like that. Well, that being said, I'm open for any comments, questions or concerns.
Any question for the board? Alex, go ahead.
Thanks for that presentation. That's great. I'm, I'm curious on, are you guys contemplating increased staff or with, with the expansion of the area? Or I don't know how overworked you are with a read and seed program, very overworked. And so I'm just curious on you, you guys' approach to that.
We are very overworked, but you know, we feel that when you find areas like this that can actually use the attention. Honestly, it, it's worth a little bit of effort to hopefully save you in, in the long run and stuff like that. So we're hoping that by getting out into those areas, especially with our seeding programs, we can address issues before they become problems and that, that's the goal. You know, we are still working with the prosecutor's office to, to see what we can do about the enforcement side and getting more assistance on that side. But, you know, reaching out to the businesses that are going in there and letting them know what the, the benefits of us being inside their area will hopefully help with the funding side and, you know, people support like Julie and Mitch and Senator and, and David and stuff like that. You know, getting their support by, and Andrea, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, walking on. You know, the support that we get from them will hopefully keep the funding coming while we can kind of really show what the program can do. Oh, and I'll get, see Augie's face over there. Yeah, yeah, don't leave Augie out.
Any other question for the board? Any questions for the community? Seeing none? So in other words, you want to bless our blessing?
Yeah, and you check. No, yeah, I mean, just, just again, again, because as a board, we felt that because all the effort that did go into getting weed and seed in Ever, the grassroots effort, you know, with Senator Pavella, as well as yourself and Kobe Lynn and the families, all of those people. We felt that we owed it to you guys to get the blessing that we wanted to kind of move it on, try to expand it a little bit.
Again, thank you. Thank you for what Weed and Seed is doing in our community and now expanding out into our sister communities. I mean, it is a benefit, it'll always be a benefit. Now, I got a lot of other stuff, a lot of other stuff to say, but yeah. Hey, see no other questions? Okay, do you, you guys don't need a resolution or anything like that from the board or? Do you need a reso or nothing? Nothing?
I just want to assure that, you know, I know that for Weed and Seed, you know, we, we're down to two full-time staffs. And so that's one of the concerns. And that was one of the concerns that we, was part of our discussion in expanding to that area. But I feel that because we have solid partners, we have here in Ever and support. And Corporal Pagan had been working really hard in connect, collaborating with the people on that end. I think that we should be able to do it. You know, we are fully aware of other communities that would like to have Weed and Seed and, and we, and I, I fully am aware of that. But we just right now funding to go to another community is really difficult for us. But hopefully with this small steps and we can show that the evidence that it does work, hopefully we can get more funding so that we can expand, yeah.
Sorry, we did just want to assure, assure the community that by no means are we going to be putting Ever behind to take care of that. It's a, it's a, it's going to be all of them and just including Barbers Point a little bit more than we have in the past.
All right, thank you again and thank you for Weed and Seed. Sir? Anybody want to make a motion?
Support, just to support the expansion.
So can I? Okay, just. Can I, can I make a motion for the board to support the expansion, Weed and Seed expansion to Kalailoa? Can I get a second? All in favor? Any appeals? Any objections? Seeing none? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to residents, community concerns and community announcements, please. I'm going to open it up to the community first and then the board members. So any community member that has an announcement or concern, please step up to the mic, any mic. State your name and your concern or announcement. Okay, we go with this one, the middle, then, hey, go ahead.
Salahat, Tararojas, and I want to read out an excerpt of a post from Sierra Club Hawaii Today. Olekavai Water is Life. What happens when there is not enough water for everyone? Hawaii is facing water crises across the islands stemming from corporate exploitation, military negligence, climate change and more. Check out the latest clip from the, check out the clip from their latest document, documentary by at CBS News Planet released just today. Or go to tinyurl.com backslash CBS dash zero four one two four. Now I want to put this on the record, it says right there stemming from corporate exploitation. And right here, I want to put on the record that there was an uproar when Haseko wanted to build a marina and it changed to a wave pool. There is still major pushback to this wave pool that now has a bouncy house obstacle course. And if you look on their website, it says celebrating our deep connection to water. My question is, and to put on the record, that's what it says on the Waikiki Way site, by wasting and commodifying our still in crisis drinking water. I know we have representatives from the CRI presenting information that you all should know about our current still water crisis. So my hashtag is make it make sense, hashtag bring back common sense, hashtag ecosystem and EV over profit. So we have a second proposed wave pool. That's what we had today. We went to court and we have, uh, it's still in continuation, but keep in mind that in Kalailoa is the second wave pool, which is going to be using seven million gallons of our fresh drinking water, just like this first wave pool is using about five or million gallons of our fresh drinking water. When you hear the testimonies from the people still suffering down the road in Kapilina, which is a previous military, now civilian housing, that they are walking, living testimonies of the effects of the current still contaminated water, where they're going blind in their left eye. They have alopecia and a lot of them, even the children, suffering neurological long-term effects that the doctor says do not make appointment to see us again, that they've been seen since 2018 before the discard, the last spill, because they cannot treat what the symptoms that they have, that they're losing bowel movement control still to this day.
Okay, rest it up.
Yeah, that they just, that they still cannot figure it out because they were not trained, the doctors said, these specialized doctors, for what they're suffering for jet fuel in the water.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Susan Gorman Chang, I'm a member of the elected Community Representation Initiative. Again, I just want to thank you as one of the boards who passed the resolution to shut down Red Hill forever. There was a time when people said we'd never do that and we're on our way, right? Last, March 23rd at Magic Island, you were all invited to a celebration. Just to celebrate the progress we have made, we had Tiana Wilbur from Y and I Neighborhood Board came down and James Kiwata Gower from Salt Lake. So our next Community Representation Initiative is here next Thursday, six o'clock. We wanted it close to Kapalina Beach Homes because they're still being impacted. There is still water testing being done by the Navy. There is still people again being impacted. We hope the Navy seems to be threatening us that they will not show up until we have mediation. We will be talking about that at the CRI meeting. I do hope they do show up. They've also cast out on all 8,000 of their samples, a large percentage of which showed total petroleum hydrocarbons continuing to be in the water. You know, we don't know if it's in the old pipes, it probably is, as the Board of Water Supply explained to us because of all the corrosion, jet fuel, gas, diesel fuel, it's not all jet fuel. It sticks into the pipes and so it gets dislodged. So flushing it is not a long-term solution. So there's still a problem. And the second wave pool, we're still in a water crisis. The Navy is flushing five millions of gallons of water a day into Halapa Stream to try to equalize the pressure. And that may have to go on forever so that the contamination doesn't spread to the rest of the aquifer. So it's really important that we not continue to waste water on a second wave pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other residents, community concerns or announcements, please stand up on the mic so I know how many people. Okay, two left. All right, anybody online, sorry.
Hello, Kenny Liu. This is an update on the cluster on Pohawkapuna Road. On March 26th, the lot was put on the market for $6.2 million. By the next day, the listing was canceled. I don't know what this means. This is feedback from our community. A foreign investor came to Ever Beach, our home, our community, and bought a piece of land to develop. When Augie asked him why here, he said he didn't know. From what we can see, he never bothered to learn about us, our community or our culture. He also never bothered to communicate with us about his plans for developing the lot. In fact, I'd say he did the opposite. In 2019, they sent a representative to the neighborhood meeting, neighborhood board meeting to discuss a plan for single-family houses. A board member asked him to come back as the plans progressed. He said he would, but he never did. In February of 2023, the developer submitted a plan, the DEA for a cluster to the neighborhood commission, not the neighborhood board, like they said they would. By the time most of the community found out about this, the period to comment had closed. In September of 2023, I saw the developer at a meeting. I gave him my phone number. I asked him to call and told him that community members wanted to meet with him. He told me he would call me. A few days later, he sent me an email saying he had nothing to say. Now, when I ask for updates from the developer's rep, they won't even return my emails. Over the past several years, the developers used that lot to store construction equipment supplies and use as a dumping ground for construction equipment supplies and use as a dumping ground for concrete and other construction materials, even though it's not zoned for that. Also, using a backhoe, and without proper permits, they remove concrete from the ocean. To us, disappeared that they have, they have no regard for our laws or the environmental damage that this might cause. On numerous occasions, they have allowed the lot to overgrow, creating a fire hazard. Even after the Lahaina wildfires, they allowed this to happen, and the weeds were about four feet high. We had to call the fire captain to come out and make them cut the weeds. To summarize, this is a foreign investor who, based on our observations, doesn't give a rip about our community, who plans to build a complex that we feel will negatively, and in some cases severely negatively affect our community and our quality of life. As per our signs, we are asking people, please don't buy a unit. Because by buying a unit, you would be helping a thoughtless foreign investor line his pockets at the expense of our community. Now ask yourself the hard question. Knowing how strongly our community is against this project, how well do you think you'll be able to assimilate into our community? How welcome do you think you'll feel? We all know the saying, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem. But I've heard it said a better way. If you're not part of the solution, you are the problem.
Thank you, Ken. Very good.
Hello, hello, Coreyus Sanction here. I just have a few concerns and complaints from the community. Um, just a couple of them. Um, Kohina Street, um, getting a lot of complaints, the children got to walk on the road. They got to weave away from the kids at the same time, the road is so horrible. You guys know what Burger King? Yeah, and there's no sidewalk for the kids, so something to look, look at. Also, when I drive my car, but it shakes so much, there's rust everywhere. I would drive an old car. Anyway, so, I know they just did Fort Weaver Road, they repaved it, so something to look at on Kohina Street. Um, Filipino community members came to me and asked me. Another one is the cones around Ever Beach. Everybody sees it, it's in front of everybody's homes, reserving stalls, yards, whatever. That's another big complaint from our Filipino community. Uh, e-bikes, you already talked about them, yes, my nephew's in the hospital. Um, Barbara's Point, I know it's part of our district. Lot of off-roading on the reef, uh, just sent a lot of pictures. They actually going off-roading on the tables now, so all the tables there are smashed. I got the pictures, the picnic tables are just crushed. Um, they, they get crushed from only cars, not, it's pretty heavy duty tables. So I just got sent pictures, rubbish, the Opalas left after every weekend. You can see the tracks going right to the reef, and then it disappears and it comes on the other side, so they're just ruining the reef. And then also, the homeless there, they're, they're telling me that, uh, there's a, there's a draw line where they can hop over the fence and they can't get bothered. And then when the police leaves, they can jump back. So they're still there, so something to look at. I don't know if it's state or city or something like that, and they were saying, um, these are reports from the lifeguards. They were saying these guys are from COVID, they got let out because he talks to them. So they just, they know the system. They run away, they go back, and they're part of the off-roading, they said. And then the other one is Hobush, there's a lot of complaints where, when we do have the kickouts or rubbish and the homeless, they end up right in the neighborhoods right there. And the concern is they get worried and they're stamping out right in front of the door, but they also go back, but we need to find a solution where we can put them in the same area, not towards the neighborhood housing. And then, and basically that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, state your name and your concern. Anybody else? Okay, see none? Senator, you got something? Okay, got last two, go ahead.
My name is Iva Iva Kajayaku. Um, I want to propose if the board would be, um, willing to set a, um, meeting or agenda, put onto your agenda, um, a resolution for, to address, um, Honokaia LLC's, um, environmental impact statement. Their, their statement that they're using is from nineteen ninety-nine, and, um, today we had court for a summary judgment to have them redo an impact statement. Um, and our concerns is that they are going to use a lot of water in a very short time. Their environmental impact statement that they're saying, um, isn't realistic for what the park is going to be doing. And, um, as our community, Kapole, all of Honouuliuli is growing. Um, if they use too much water, the aquifer drops in their water level, which can, um, impact us with having, um, too much saline or salt going into it, which would affect all of us. So, um, they are saying at this moment that they're, they don't need to address that, and I just think that, um, it's an important thing for us to, as a community, bring up. Thank you.
Thank you. Wait, hold on real quick. Um, HFD, real quick, you want to give your report so you can get out, first responders, go ahead. Sorry about that, Senator. Thank you for coming. I know you're very busy.
No worries. Hello, everyone, uh, my name is, uh, I'm firefighter three, Brian Rooney of the Ever Beach Fire Station at Agent twenty-four, and I would just like to give you some of our statistics that we have for the month of March. So for the month of March, for the fires, we have had two structure fires, six wildland brush fires, four nuisance fires, which encompasses, um, rubbish fires outside of a structure or of a vehicle. Um, and we've also had seven activated alarms with no fire. For emergencies, we had eight hundred and ninety-seven medicals, one motor vehicle collision with a pedestrian, ten motor vehicle crash collisions. And our safety tip that we have is evacuation planning. So have an emergency preparedness plan ready in case of an environmental emergency, fire, or natural disaster. Know two ways of, to get out of your home, and consider the route that you will take if you need to evacuate from your neighborhood due to an emergency. Visit fire.honolu.gov to learn more. And leave early enough to avoid being caught in fire, smoke, or road congestion. Establish a predetermined location such as a well-prepared neighbor or relative's house, a low-risk area, or a shelter or evacuation center. Take your emergency supply kit containing your family and pets' necessary items. Thank you. Any questions?
Any question from the board? Any question from the community? See none? Thank you very much. Stay safe out there. Okay, moving back to questions, uh, resident community concerns, we got Senator and also Alex. Okay, go ahead, Alex, you have a question?
It was a comment for the woman that spoke, and I know there's several of you that commented on the water issue. And so I was just going to say that, um, I have no idea how the board will vote on stuff, but if you're interested, I mean, what I would recommend is trying to write a resolution, like, just go to the website for the, like, we were all super busy and like, what really helps is when the community gets involved, right? So if you guys are interested in writing a resolution, like, just go look at a couple of examples on the neighborhood board sites, there's bunch, there's hundreds of them there, and try to put, lay down what the issue is and the argument, and what you're specifically asking for, and then you could potentially bring it back here. And that, that's how I think you could try to formulate this into something that might be effective, you know, that's, that would be my, my, my recommendation.
So I want to add, um, I got a message from, um, board member Janet Lindela Cruz, and she was wanting to help write the resolution. So if you guys can give me, like, your contact, and I'll just give it to her. Thank you. Senator, you got something? Go ahead.
Just, just real quick. Well, I know this is election season, and, um, you know, there's a nu- numerous complaints coming to, not only my office, but to the city on, um, I guess some of these guys don't know where to put their signs on city streets, city corners, private property, and so forth and so on. So that's something that I guess the board should look into, going forward. Um, you guys live in a community, drive around, you guys gonna see them, because if you ask them to move home, they're not gonna move home. Um, they think they're in the right. Another one that is concerning to me, that we're having a lot of, lot of people driving in our community don't have driver's license. They're driving around our community and, um, endangering our families by not having driver's license, so some of these guys, we're going to give the information to the crime reduction unit to investigate their, uh, vehicle if it's registered. And if it is, why is it registered unless it's driver? Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Any question for the, any, uh, announcements or concern from the board? John Clark, go ahead.
Aloha, everyone. Uh, please mark your calendars, three weeks from this Saturday. Say it one more time. Don't see anybody write down on your calendars. Okay, three weeks from this Saturday, we are going to be having a Saber Fest. It's going to be at, uh, Waikiki from four to nine PM. Uh, not sure if many of you know, not sure if many of you know, but last year, our, uh, James Campbell High School marching band actually represented the state of Hawaii in the National Independence Day Parade in Washington DC. Last year, for the first time, as you may remember, the Principal Hero Day Parade was held right here in Kapole, right next to Ever Beach. Our James Campbell High School Saber Band was there, and they will be performing at the Waikiki three weeks from this Saturday. There's also going to be a lot of talent from James Campbell High School there, so come out. Support, there's going to be, uh, of course, plenty of, uh, ono food, uh, lots of, uh, presentations. So mark your calendars, three weeks from this Saturday. Would love to see you there, the students would love to see you there, especially with the talent of the James Campbell High School marching band. Aloha.
Mr.?
Uh, it's actually May fourth. May fourth, thank you. I appreciate that.
And, and what time is that, Mr. Vice Chair?
It would be from four PM to nine PM. They're going to have food vendors, silent auction, Saber Senior Recognition, so bring your light, uh, and entertainment, it says, and more, so, more.
Any, any other announcements or concerns from the board? Online? Go ahead, go ahead.
The reason for the event is awesome, completely for that. I just was wondering, is there any way to change, like, you know, the venue? Like, as I was mentioning before, because that's really how history gets lost of the building of that place that actually broke spring water, artesian water, broke the water table. So to celebrate on a place that broke our water table, and there's more history than I can do in the testimony and a question, but this is, again, going to continue on to the second wave pool proposal, so to not forget the history for the purpose of, uh, celebration. So mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, I have something real quick, um, like last week, I mean, last month, I brought up to the community, um, if they have, uh, you know, certain individuals in our community to be announced that, um, they'd go above and beyond, and I think last month, we did, uh, Campbell. Uh, Principal Lee brought up some of the, the people at Campbell. Um, I got a, I guess, Ilima, uh, principal, Shane Greenland. Uh, he wrote, uh, "The custodial team at Lima Intermediate School consistently demonstrate exceptional dedication and diligence to the maintain, uh, maintaining a clean, safe, and welcoming, uh, environment for students, staff, and visitors. Their hard work ensures the school operates smoothly and remains, uh, conductive to learning and community engagement." And these guys are James, if I kill your name, don't ask me, you know, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm apologizing by now, but uh, James, uh, Belaski, Kiaaka Rodriguez, Clayton Assing, Darren Naga Tori, and Leanne Avila. Uh, two, the security team at Lima Intermediate School exemplifies unwavering commitment and professionalism in ensuring the safety and security of our school community through their vigilance, persistence, proactive measures, and quick response to any situation. They create a reassuring environment where students, staff, and visitors can thrive and focus on learning. Uh, that would be Larry Montier, Montira, Steven Lappingding, Aaron Tori, Malia Mukulehua, Doreen Villanueva Hermosura. And then our office staff, Lima Intermediate School embodies excellence and administrative support, demonstrating unwavering dedication, efficiency, and kindness in every task they undertake. Their warm and welcoming demeanor, paired with their exceptional organizing skills, ensure that the daily, the daily operations of our school runs seamlessly. They are the backbone of our administration efforts, consistently going above and beyond the meeting needs of the students, parents, and staff with grace and professionalism. That's Tracy Anara, Lilian Cordero, Suzette Hamos, Brittany Encera, and Diana Kabanban. Ooh, two more, okay, sorry. Uh, the, the technology department at Lima Intermediate School plays a pivotal role in driving innovation and enhancing educational experiences for our students and educators. With their experienced creativity and tireless education, they ensure our school remains at the forefront of technology integration. From maintaining our network infrastructure and providing technical support, and implementing cutting-edge solutions, their commitment to excellence empowers our entire school community to thrive in a diligently connected world. That would be Russell Liari and Sia Monique De La Cruz. Last but not least, the educational assistance at, at Ilima Intermediate School exemplifies unwavering dedication and compassion in supporting the diverse needs of our students and educators. With their nurturing guidance, professionalism, or professionalized attention, and tireless commitment, they play a vital role in, uh, fostering an inclusive and supportive learning environment. Their collaborative spirits and willingness to go above and beyond ensure that every student receive individualized support they need to succeed academically, socially, and emotionally. We are immensely grateful for their involved, uh, invaluable contributions to our school and community. Uh, they are Judy Rodriguez, Edanel Pino, sorry, Ryan Berin. Pronounce that for me. Berin, Berin. Dee. Tammy Perry, Shirley Hoopai, Monique Lapes, Joy De La Cruz, uh, Megan Thompson, Janelle Nishi, and Vincent Aurelio. And there, that's what they have. Thank you very much, Principal Greenland.
Aloha, just, uh, want to make mention that there are quite a few, uh, citizens online. I see some, uh, concerned parent, uh, Ever Beach resident, uh, a few other, um, sort of anonymous, uh, names. We welcome you, uh, we actually have, uh, kind of a full house here today, which is nice to see a full house online as well. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving on to government officials and, um, bear with me, board, and I'm going to be taking it out of order, and I want to, um, you know, for the past couple months, we've been kind of struggling with time restraint and a lot of our representatives at the end of our board meeting would have to rush or not given a, give a, a report. I would have to stand by the report and kind of move on, so I'm going to kind of like start from the bottom and move our way up. I, I, I'm just going to bounce around. Is that okay with the board? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on. We're going to start with, uh, Representative Diamond Garcia.
Aloha, board, community, thank you for being here. Uh, normally, I'm the last person and have one minute, so thank you, Chair, for that. Want to start off with our newsletter, there's some copies back here, but I wanted to recognize the Kapole Campbell Awardees in the DOE. Uh, the cap, the, the Campbell Kapole Complex area recently won, um, the Hide DOE's twenty twenty-two, so two years ago Team of the Year, they recently had their recognition, so we are honored to recognize those teachers who also got some federal grant uh, to this complex, which will help our, our kids in Eva and Kapole. We are wrapping up at, at the State Capitol, there's about three weeks left. These next two weeks is conference committees, lots of bills are dying at this time, there's about three hundred and seventy-five bills alive right now at the Capitol in both House and Senate. I know, uh, Rep Alcos will, will talk more about what bills are alive and dead, but I'm open for any questions. Once again, there's a copy of my newsletter in the back. Thank you.
Any ques- question for the representative on the board? Any question for the community? See none? Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on to Representative David Alcos, go ahead.
I don't know how to speak when you're planning people inside here. My wife calling me right now. Uh, first of all, I just, you know, what happened today at Keoni Ula, where the kid got hurt. And then there was a shooting at Burger King, there was another bus when hit on motorcycle, right by Burger King, somebody got hurt. First of all, I just, you know, what happened today at Keone Ula where the kid got hurt, and then there was a shooting at Burger King, there was another bus when hit on motorcycle right by Burger King, somebody got hurt. Food land, somebody else got hurt right in that area, not hurt, died bystanders on the side, Roosevelt by the train track. Another real fatal accident within our area, and that's within about a month or so. All I just want to say to the community and to the board, it doesn't matter about whose fault it is, but please bear aware while you're driving or watch for pedestrians. And it's really concerning in our community to have some kind of tragic like this, a shooting at Haw bush just a while ago, or armed robbery, or some kind of thing that had. So in this moment in time, I just want to take ten seconds in silence and just pray for those ones that in need, just in silence. Thank you. As Mitch was saying that, you know, Shane Greenland came in and gave some certificates, or honored some of these guys that working in our community, in our schools, whether it's a J P O, administration, cafeteria worker, these are the backbones that what is our education about, that what really thrive our community. And these guys are working really hard, I had an honor and opportunity to give them certificates, not just from Elima, but for all the schools in our, in our district, for all the hard work, and that we get to drop off our kids and come home and pick them up after work, and knowing that they'll be safe for most of the time, and you know, these are what it takes to drive a community, and I'm so grateful that, you know, I can honor them for doing that, and so we had a good turnout, about fifty to sixty people came out, and the Boys and Girls Club, a couple members of the Boys and Girls Club, really excellent work that they've been recognized of being one of the top Boys and Girls Club on the island, on some of these leaders and young students that was out there in the Boys and Girls Club, and you know, there's a lot of events that you can check out my flyer. Some of the bills, as Diamond said, you know, one of the big bills, the legalizing marijuana died, you know, there is some bills that they want to decriminalize marijuana, where now you can carry it passing the House and passing the Senate, where you can carry one ounce of marijuana and get only charged twenty-five dollars, so that being said, that's like, right now, if you get three marijuana on your joints, you get charged one hundred fifty dollars. Now they're saying that if you carry about fifty marijuana on you, you're only gonna get charged twenty-five dollars. You know, some kind of bills like that, and it's still passing the Senate and the House, but it's gonna go up to the governor to make the choice, and yeah, I forgot what was the other bill, but thank you, my time is up, if you can have any questions.
So in other words, you gotta roll faster.
Gotta roll fast.
I just say, you know, laugh, but yeah.
Oh, this, had this other bill, I just want to say, they want to make jaywalk legalizing, jaywalking, and I'm just so afraid that this jaywalking, after this kid going on, we got, we've spent so much money in investing, but they trying to make jaywalk legal, so what's your guys concerned, what you guys think about it, you know, those are the some of the bills that coming up, just wanted to give you guys.
Any question for the board? Any questions on the, for the community, you got one, okay, go ahead.
Aloha, David, Tara Rojas, I have a question regarding what I saw in your newsletter that came, you know, to our house regarding the motocross site. And so, on one hand, I see it's great, because we're just, you know, at the park, the beach park, and we see them, you know, riding on the grass and on the beach. And I'm like, okay, I think that's why, you know, you're proposing it, but my question is, because it's right diagonal of that second proposed wave pool, I looked at the acreage, you said two hundred and twenty acres, and it said you're working with the city, and I believe the city, the Navy, and someone else. So I was wondering, what is the process for you to work on proposing, when you say you're working with them, what does that mean? Again, is that an environmental statement, because since it's that same area, and we know, you know, there are living heirs and their descendants who are and have true jurisdiction, so I just was wondering, the same issues with whether it's a cluster development or second wave pool. It's a great idea, because they needed a place to, you know, to do that, so how does the process work, and are there any environmental assessments done?
Thank you for the question, and to answer that question, that's, if some of you guys know, it's driving to Waikiki Plains, after you make your turn on Roosevelt, that whole acres all the way down on the left was about four hundred acres or something like that, and the Navy wanted to give it over to the city for for parks and recs development. Some of the racers wanted to see if they could, you know, get a portion of that to put some racing wherever they can, you know, do some off-the-street racing. But again, the mayor didn't take it yet, but we're trying to see if we can get it for parks and recs, they are contaminated. Things on the ground where they gotta cap it, and so right now, it's in the early stage, there's no promise on whatever, two hundred acres, one hundred acres, it's, I urging the city and county to take it over, so we can develop more parks and recs for our kids, because, you know, we don't have enough, and I think that's a great place, because a lot of homeless and a lot of things that is in that area.
And I know I can do a follow-up, a woman.
No, wait, sorry, I mean, can only one, I will give you one, but only one, one question per.
One question.
No, there's your second one, but I'm saying, you only get one, I'm just, I'm just letting you know, I'll let you go, only one, go ahead.
So my, I just, my thing was, I just found this website, and it's actually a dot M I L, so a military website on the history, and again, just going back to that. So did you know that, like, the history of how things, the land possession, the history of the land possession in the Navy, so I found that information, I can, you know, write it, and you can check it out. And it's like the same thing, like, history gets buried.
On the Hawaiian issues over there, there's a lot of Hawaiian areas that I even seen, the Hayals all in that area, there's so.
No, actually, this one was for the, regarding Army and Navy, how they got possession of land, yeah.
Yeah, anyway, Councilwoman Andrea Topola knows more about it than you can ask her.
Okay, mahalo.
Thank you. Any other questions online, nope, anybody else saying nothing, thank you, Representative. Okay, we're gonna move on to Senate District Twenty, Senator Kirk Fivella.
Thank you, Chair. Couple of things, at Education Week, but one of the biggest highlights for us is that one of our own Boys and Girls Club won the Youth of the Year, Jana Johnson. She has one of our finalists, and she ended up winning it from here for the Boys and Girls Club on Ipano. And that's something great, because we all know we, we love our Boys and Girls Club over here. So right now, with Education Week, we just had a great time on this session, tried to get things done. What we're going over is the Keone Ula Elementary School at the Literacy Career Sharing Day, where I got to interact with a lot of the fifth graders with a parent, going through what they wanted, and it was really an eye-opener, that they emphasized that they did not want the marijuana recreation bill to pass. So that's why we started sign waving in front of the Capitol, so I just want to give a shout out to everybody that came and signed with us to say no to pakalulu. Going forward, the Everbeach Science Club Foundation Easter Bash was at our beautiful campus of Elima Intermediate, and we got blessed to have the presence of our Lieutenant Governor there, showing support. Going forward, and again, just, just a little bit of what had happened in Lima, in front of Lima and on the side of Burger King. The day of the shooting, we went on the news and asked the community to come forward to stop the gun violence in the community. And then the next day, we got, they would security watch District Eight did a prayer service, and we did a sign waving in front of Burger King, and that was a great turnout, that's also on the flyer. And we have a young gentleman who is actually future Farmers of Hawaii, he came and did the moment of contemplation. If you listen to this little kid, well, just a little kid, if you listen to this teenager, and you close your eyes, you think you're talking to an adult. He has big plans, when he got out of high school, he tried to bring agriculture to the next level, and I guess the next century. And then, of course, we had a few honorees for our legislative of Norman Solid and Ariel Villanueva, has been teachers, been honor of teachers of the of the district complex in Eva Beach. And then, of course, you know, we had, I mean, I guess you could look on the flyer, but the Senate bill was really good, one that we had helped, and I want to thank my House colleagues in the finance to step up and actually came on TV and said that Hawaii is not ready for legalizing marijuana. We support medical marijuana, and most of us do, and we cannot have legalizing marijuana at this point. So going forward, today, we had GM seven oh two and seven oh three, a good friend Blaine, and a good friend Mufi, and just, it was an awesome day today for them to get nominated to the Hawaii Tourism Board, and then, of course, Senator Decoy. And the last was the Women's Legislative Caucus Twenty-Fifth Anniversary Easter Bash on March twenty-seventh. That was a great turnout, going out to shout out to the senators and the House, to put that together for our women in need in different nonprofit organizations. And with that, I, no questions.
Any questions for the board? Any questions for the community? Here we got one, two, okay. Wait, 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 you gotta come to the mic, wait, Moleko, you first, and then hit the second one.
Aloha, Chair, members of the board, Moleko speaking, I know that you voted Aole in your legislative session last month against fruit trees being planted on government lands due to accidents happening in the Ocean Point area, I just want to know, what are these incidents that happen, can you tell us what accidents are these, and go over, you know, were they fruit trees, and are you against planting fruit trees, or you're just against planting trees on government lands in total? And yeah, if you could just elaborate on that, I appreciate that.
Most definitely, I am not against planting fruit trees, but I was also a board member here, when we have a lot of trees, not fruit trees, in the community that cause accidents. Okay, and then, when I talked about that, and they only played a short snippet of it, they didn't go ahead and said that, as Sniffin from DOT also said, there's no place in Eva Beach state property that we can do that, certain places you can, because you have an easement. And the person that planted the trees, one of my colleagues, had to go ahead and did fill out a form for liability. So don't let people fool you, you cannot just go out there and plant trees, it ain't possible, you still need to follow the law of the land. And if you want to talk about fruit trees, talk about planting it, or talk to board member Mitchell Tananes and the stuff that we did, and we build, and we done over the years. So there's a lot of people that's still new to this community, they don't know the stuff that me and board member Mitchell and some of the board members did a lot in planting and removing invasive species. So when you take something from a snippet and don't see the whole thing, you only see it on TikTok or Facebook, but you don't see the whole thing, it's very easy to be judgmental. Thank you.
Okay, please step up to the mic, and your question, please.
My name is Randy Borges, let's see, I to the committee, I just get one question. Kurt, you drunk, Kurt, you drinking, are you drinking, you drunk, that's all I ask, yes or no?
Randy, you know me.
Just say yes or no, just say yes or no, that's all I need, is yes or no.
No, Santa is here, we got Kelsey, you're up.
Thank you, good evening, board, my name is Kelsey Lee with the Board of Water Supply, presenting the April general water announcements, to start off, for our main break report, on March fourth, we had an eight-inch break at ninety-one eight four four Keke Kia Place, Eva Beach, on March fifth, we had a sixteen-inch break at ninety-one six one zero Monocopu Street. On March twenty-fourth, there was an eight-inch break at ninety-one nine two eight Wa Hua Place. For our general water announcements, April fourteenth to April twentieth is Detective Leak Week. It's time to chase down and repair those pesky leaks, the Board of Water Supply has once again partnered with Hardware Hawaii for the annual Detective Leak Week campaign, Sunday, April fourteenth through Saturday, April twentieth, twenty twenty-four. This campaign is an annual reminder to check your plumbing fixtures and irrigation systems for leaks. One of the most common leaks is a leaky toilet, which is usually caused by a worn-out or faulty flapper. Learn more about leak detection and win prizes at our in-person event on Wednesday, April seventeenth, from eleven thirty A M to one P M at Tamaran Park Bishop Square in downtown Honolulu. Find out more at www boardofwatersupply.com. I have a response from one question from Resident Tara, concerned about the frequency of breaks around Makuli Road. The leak I reported last week on, I mean, last month, on February fourth, at ninety-one eight six four Makuli Road, was on a four-end service line and was not on a transmission main. It broke in the same area where further down the road from where the wastewater break occurred in February of last year, twenty twenty-three. The most current water main break on Makuli Road happened on February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, about a week after the wastewater main broke. The B W S water main was installed in nineteen fifty-nine along Makuli Road, and there have been no other water main breaks on Makuli Road since then. The broken wastewater main spilled on February twenty twenty-three inside the Department of Environmental Services Eva Beach wastewater pump station on Makuli Road, and was not related to any B W S water main and service lateral breaks. For more information on the wastewater break, please contact E N V at eight zero eight seven six eight three four eight six. Are there any questions?
Any questions for the board? Any questions from the community, Tara, you got something, go ahead.
So aloha, Tara, do you have the update on the twenty million, fifteen, twenty million gallon per month leak yet, that's been going on for, what now, two years, five years?
I don't have any update at this moment, but I can follow up.
So it's still leaking at this moment, yeah?
I can't, I'm not sure, I will follow up on that. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we're gonna move on to Councilmember Andrea Topola.
Aloha, Chair, aloha, board members, aloha, community, good to see everybody tonight, so I'm gonna actually answer some of the questions that were previously stated, and then share a little bit about what's in my newsletter, which is on the table in the back. So first off, for weed and seed, I just wanted to say thank you to Gail and those who participate. One of the main things we should be pushing for is that weed and seed is supposed to have more officers and more programs. And so, as you guys know, there is a twenty-five thousand dollar bonus given to new officers, so we've had an uptick of people applying. We should be pushing to have our own district, we need to separate out, so that White and I can have their own station, Kapole can, so this is part of the initiative that we're doing in order for us to have this. So they did allocate three hundred thousand for the second floor of White and I Police Station, and the reason why that's important for Eva is because our beats are all together, so from Eva all the way to Kena Point, one, one police district. And for most of the time, you guys have only two officers covering any of your neighborhoods at one time, because we're just really short. So as we see this uptick in officers, because you have weed and seed here, we should be pushing for the officers to be in this district, because weed and seed is about weeding out crime and seeding in programs, and we can't do that with minimal officers. So we are in the process of city budget right now, and we are trying to allocate more funds to it, doesn't matter if we have more funds, what matters is warm bodies. Because the more officers we actually get on the streets, the more we can allocate them to the districts. And I also wanted to share that, you know, part of weed and seed, actually, because they've now become a nonprofit, is that it will actually only stay in this area. That program that they call Safe and Sound in Waikiki is the same idea as weed and seed, but it's for that area. So weed and seed will actually be something that's very specific to Eva, but we, we also need to fight for all of their cases to get priority in prosecution. It does not matter if they arrest people, and then there's no trial, there's no follow-up, so part of weed and seed is supposed to be that the cases that you guys have in this area are supposed to be prioritized by the prosecutor. You need to ensure that that happens, if it doesn't happen, this is not working, right? So Gail and them can only do so much, but if, and I've complained to prosecutor on myself, if I feel like cases are not being prioritized, because that's the point of weed and seed, and I know Steve cares a lot about weed and seed, but we are the eyes and the ears on the ground, so that's how we can help with that. Secondly, in regards to what was asked about for the racetrack, there's over two hundred and forty-three acres in the Barber's Point area that the Navy still has, it's part of BRAC. So when the Navy owned the whole area Barber's Point, right, they broke it up, because they had no initiative out there, gave out parcels, but they have still two hundred and forty-three acres just sitting there. You would not believe when this started. They started to give it to the state in nineteen ninety-nine. You know, the first mayor that discussed the, the transfer of land was Jeremy Harris. I still have the document that Jeremy signed that said the city would take that land. Here we are in twenty twenty-four, still no transfer of land. I sat with our mayor for four years and they still said they're going to sign the deed. I'm so confused why we not signing the deed, okay? Because the Navy's not using the area anymore. With two hundred and forty-three acres, we could have soccer fields, softball fields. I mean, it's supposed to be used for only parks, no other issues, no housing, no nothing. It's supposed to be only for recreational use. So we should all be pushing for that, too. I'm not so sure about exactly where the, um, you know, the car, uh, the racetrack would go, but there's two hundred and forty-three acres. So I just want to let you guys know, if you need any of the documents, I have every single one all the way back to nineteen ninety-nine. Lastly, you know, there's a few bills I'm pushing for right now. One of them is Bill fifty-eight, and that's in regards to shutting down game rooms. We should be having a hearing on May first, which would be our second reading on that. I am on my last vote, if you're in favor of creating your own ocean safety division. Right now, our lifeguards are part of EMS, and I'm proposing that we separate them and give them their own department. Last vote next Wednesday, ten AM, if you want to be a part of that. So I'm open to questions, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the board?
Thanks for that.
I like that, and John, go ahead.
That great report, uh, pretty good. I guess the one thing I would say is, you know, this is a, a community meeting and those helps, like when you say this is what we should be doing, tell the people, like, what can they do? Because you're saying we, we should be pushing for this, like, who are we talking about and what can they do?
Well, right now, because I know there's more officers coming in, my thing is that I have put forward, and I'm not so sure about Campbell, but I bet they would want this. I'm putting forward that we pilot out a school resource officer program. So on the neighbor islands, there is an officer that works at every school. We don't have that here, I, I don't even know why. And we have the biggest and most full high schools on the west side. And there's all this fighting, there's all this violence, but we still think that a patrol officer should handle this? That's not, that's not it, that's not it. A school resource officer is somebody that would work with the school administration, be proactive in their cases, their interactions with the counselors and with the school. So for me, I'm trying to find every avenue possible to pull more officers into our district, whether that's into our schools, adding them to our beats, adding more CPT officers. The second thing about the prosecution cases, I'm suggesting that if you guys know about cases, say for example, Dave or, you know, Kurt, if there are cases that are not being prioritized, or you feel like, hey, this is one repeat, repeat criminal. I seen them seven, eight, nine times back out. We need to come together and say, this is not good. This guy, same one, breaking into same store ten times, not good, right? Because there was one that, of course, you guys know that happened in front of the White and I station where he did have enough, I think the prosecutors had enough to put him in jail, but they RPI'd him, which is they released pending investigation. He came out of the station, killed somebody. So like, we need to be aware that if you see repeat criminals coming out of jail, that means that we're not getting our sentencing correct. So I don't know those issues, you guys would have to tell me if you see repeat criminals in your own community and if we need to address that.
Okay, thank you, John, go ahead.
Thank you for that impassioned statement. It's always a joy to see you come. I know you're very busy sometimes and you can't come to all the neighborhood boards, so I appreciate that. Uh, I, I'd like to go back to Alex, Alex's comment, as well as this issue with enforcement. Uh, I'm hearing from the community quite a bit, and this is why I brought this up at the beginning of the meeting that I served in Iraq. I know what it's like to be under fire and have your life at risk. I keep hearing that people have problems with HPD not, not arresting, uh, you know, not want to do paperwork. I'm hearing quite a bit of that. Uh, they just, they'll come by, they'll maybe settle the situation, don't do a report and then move on. So I think it starts right there as well, not just, not just enforcement all the way through the courts. So, and I understand, you know, they're, they're overtax. Second part of this is, for example, at the, um, at the accident scene earlier today, a lot of the, and it's unfortunate, HPD, you'll see three or four officers kind of pooped it over somewhere, just, just sitting there and not patrolling. I think that has a lot to do with it as well. I used to be director of security at a mall on the mainland, and a big part of our job was just presence. Wh- wh- where you're at, you can prevent crime from being there. So how do we, how do we, how do we get to that solution? I can talk to Officer Pig and I can talk to other people, but, you know, until we get the police commission involved and sort of make these officers. Again, I'm saying this with some degree of trepidation because I understand they're putting their lives at risk, and I'm not attacking them personally. But what I'm hearing from the community is they want to see more patrolling of the officers that we currently have.
So two things, one is if you're in direct contact with an officer that you feel is not doing report or didn't do one, you can ask for a supervisor, right? You can say, I need to speak to your sergeant, I need to speak to your lieutenant, because I feel like a, a report should be done. I would suggest don't wait on that, take immediate action. Secondly, if there are repeat times where you see patrol cars sitting or you're, to be honest, they could be not be patrolled, they could be part of like Traffic Division or whatever, tell me the time and the location, and I will talk to the major and figure out if it was part of her patrol, it was part of crew, and I can figure out what they were doing. But anyone can call me, seven six eight five zero zero one. Um, I think that you should like, take a picture and tell me, because I talk to Major Beckley all the time, because enforcement's a huge part of us feeling safe, right? I can't do anything if I don't know what's going on, so.
The reason I bring this up is because.
One question, one question, one question.
Repet-? I'm just explaining my question.
Wait, one question, we will move it to Officer Pig in online, go ahead, go ahead, Officer.
Uh-oh.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, yeah, sorry, um, sorry, I had to leave, but I wish some of these things would have been brought up when I was there. You know, the, the thing about officers being at a scene and sitting in a car, what's important to understand is some of those officers may be doing their report while everybody else is doing the investigation. You know, traffic control, there's a lot of things that are being done and, and to say that, oh, the officers are, are not doing their job. Officers are more than happy to tell you, if you come up to them asking what they're doing, they'll be more than happy to tell you exactly what they're doing. You know, so if there's a question with that, that is a concern. Our office, people can always call us and ask us, and we can go and research it as well. You know, um, it, it's, it's important for people to understand that the officers cannot be everywhere at all times, but the way the law works, there's a lot of officers that have to do what they need to do from what they, when they got there and they saw a scene, that it's not a matter of, okay, well, I'm there, so somebody's dirty trapped, so I can leave and go back to do my job. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of other things that go on with that. You know, my understanding is that there was a comment, um, uh, made on, online about where were the officers on this kind of stuff was happening and, 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 you know, a former official, elected official was questioning officers sitting in certain areas. You know, officers sit in areas because that's high crime areas. We sit in areas because that's areas that we requested to be at. So it's not like they're just picking a spot to hang out and, and do whatever they need to do. So, but I guess, uh, you know, um, Councilmember Tupola said, you know, if you guys give us dates and times, we'll be more than happy to research it and find out. But we don't want people to just jump to the conclusion that, hey, we're not doing enforcement, you know?
Yeah, and I would say that my comments, my comments were not to attack officers, my comments were the specificity of what unit is out there, at what time will help us to know and respond to what your concern is.
Yeah, exactly, and thank you for that. And, you know, and like I said, you know, even with the accident today, you know, a comment was where were the officers? You know, with, with four hundred, uh, electric bikes and, and, and eight hundred kids leaving the school, where would you like us to be? So that we would know that that's the accident's going to happen. You know, I mean, w- w- we all try to do the best we can, we're trying to do our job, um, you know, pointing the fingers does not solve the problem. Um, uh, talking about it and, and, and getting answers may, may help you to understand what's going on. But, uh, again, you know, like Councilmember said, she knows, she calls us out when she has questions as well. You know, we're more than happy to answer when people have a question. You know, we're not, we're not trying to hide anything. It's just that people need to understand that we have things that need to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Corporal Piggin. Any other questions for the community? Here we got one, Tara, go ahead.
Hi, good to see you. Uh, I just wanted to make this all encompassing, and you know how you said you found history when you research, and it goes back to, I think you said nineteen ninety-nine? I just wanted to know if you could, uh, go back even further for the beginning of history and to have that include police versus, you know, like sheriffs. Uh, so that encompasses like jurisdiction, jurisdiction, like help, helping, like penalizing. Also, including the history of like the, that dot mill, which is the history of Army and Navy, which deals with the issue of land. And we know that a lot of the land issues is why we have, you know, a lot of these, these crime issues, you know, in the first place, right?
You can email me at a2pol@honolulu.gov, be specific with me, and then I'll be specific with my response.
And then the last one was, uh, to include Kalailoa, I was hoping to hear your response.
That is it, so they call it Barber's Point, but it is called Kalailoa. So BRAC is the division of Navy land that was out in Barber's Point that is now called Kalailoa. So a large amount of it is still within the Navy, of which we'd like it to be not.
Thank you, seeing no other questions, thank you, Councilmember. Okay, now we're going to move on to US Marine Corps Base Hawaii.
Chair, community, good evening. So last week, and actually tomorrow, uh, the Marines and civilians from Marine Corps Base Hawaii manly PRTF around Kalailoa Heritage Park, uh, removing some invasive species and doing some other kind of tasks, kind of help out the, the land managers there, uh, kind of restore that park to its, uh, its natural beauty. That's a part of our readiness and environmental protection integration program. Uh, and the next thing is, thank you for your continued patience and understanding as we continue to work through these, uh, results from the sampling and analysis, uh, that was conducted back in February. And, uh, that's all we've got for announcements. Uh, I do have a picture storyboard and a newsletter back on the table, uh, if you want to look at that, but here for any questions.
Any question for the board? Alex, go ahead.
Yeah, I did have a question about, um, you had given that presentation of the, presentation was given about the SDC at the, I think it was last board meeting, the one before that. Um, and I know that, uh, Liam Chin, neighborhood member, uh, board member, had written you, I think, three times, asking for a copy of that presentation. And so I know he didn't get any response, at least that's what he told me.
Yep.
And I'm wondering if your plan is to share that with, with him or, or maybe with the board or what is the plan?
Is there a? The Neighborhood Commission, uh, Assistant has the briefing, it should be in your Ever Beach Neighborhood Board shared drive or whatever you guys use. Okay, that's great, thanks for that.
Any question from the community?
Aloha, I know the last month's meeting, you said you all did your own testing of the lead in the water, and I just wanted to know when, I was hoping you would be releasing the results of that test today.
Yeah, so it was not a test of the water, it was the test of the range, the training facility at PRTF, not the water. Um, and just to, to add some context to that, you know, there's twenty-four hundred samples in total. Uh, it's a lot of, a lot of data to sift through, analyze and assess, and really boil down into something that matters and means something to the community, to the board, to legislators, uh, so that's what we're working through right now.
How long do you expect it to take, because now it's going on?
I, I don't want to speculate, but when it's, when it's ready, uh, for public consumption, you guys will have it.
It's going on two years now.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, anybody online? Oh, go to the mic.
Hi, hi, um, we see you every month, um, just a couple of questions. What was that thing we were talking about, the cape net? To, to block the bullets, what is it, what was it called?
Berm?
Berm? No, there's another name beside the berm. Bat, bat, what?
Bat wing?
Yeah, yeah. Oh, okay, 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 okay. Also, um, my tournament is, uh, May seventeen, my keiki fishing tournament.
Okay.
Next month, May seventeen. I just want to know if it's okay to have it there.
All the fish you catch give to me, not that you know, I.
We'll give it to Mitch.
Yeah, not a problem.
Yeah.
That's why he's so big.
If I can get some information from you after this, now I'll follow up with you.
Yeah, yeah, sure, please.
Thank you.
Moleko, you got something? Okay, go ahead.
I don't have any questions, I'm just gonna, um, ask you guys to just move your pool law shooting range, we don't need that in our community. Um, move them to your guys' base, Schofield, you know what I mean? Um, I've listened to you guys' shooting range since I was little, the noise is, and I cannot handle it. You know what I mean, it's taunting. We don't know the effects it's causing on our community, it sounds like a war zone up in here. So I'm not, I'm not asking, I tell you guys, move your guys' pool law shooting range, mahalo.
Yeah. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, I, I'm Julie, but I want to take a point of personal privilege. I was thinking and talking to my husband and my son on text while we were here about the, the, um, words that were thrown earlier. And, you know, I'm a, I, I think everybody knows, I'm a teacher, Corey's a teacher, Corey probably started at Campbell a couple of months before I did. So Corey and I have worked together for years, and Corey and I have known each other for years, Corey has been a teacher longer than I have. Um, and Corey will also probably agree that, um, over the years, when the internet has come into play and telephones, we've had to break up fights with kids because of things on the internet and social media now, right? In twenty twenty-four, um, I just don't think I'd like to see it with adults in the room. You know, and when I think about it, like, my kid came here because I've been gone from my house since before eight o'clock this morning, I haven't gone home yet. So he just came to see me because I'm not going to be home till after ten. You know, and I know Tara has her son in the room, too, so we have two kids in the room, and we have adults, and, and we don't need titles in here, we just have adults. Um, you know, throwing out accusations about what they saw online. You know, and I think that we need, when we're looking at how we, we, we're, we expect kids to act, we need to think about that as adults, too. That, you know, maybe when we're looking at things online, that we need to maybe not jump to conclusions. You know, I, I don't know everybody in the room, I do know Senator Kurt Favella, and I know that the impression and the cuts of the video was making it look like that various things about him being an alcoholic, and that is not true, he doesn't drink at all. You know, and so I think for, for some kids, as we would tell the other kids, you know, if you know the truth, you should say it, right? And so I, that is what I can say. And I think for everybody else, you know, like, when we're watching this, we just need to say that's enough. And I think, you know, for the, the cuts of the video and for people, for adults to do this, I think that's enough. You know, and, um.
Good, okay, thank you. Good, thank you, moving on to US Navy.
Aloha Chair, aloha community.
Wait, sorry, sorry, hold on real quick, hold on real quick, Dan, hold on, oh, sorry about that, Corey, go ahead.
You know, Neighborhood Board is run by Robert's rules. Robert's rules does not allow personal attacks. And from that question, it was a personal attack. So I'd like to make a motion to strike that question from the minutes, and I'd like to get a second.
Second. Corey, I have a question, does that strike the responses, too?
Like, I mean, it, the question that asked doesn't exist, okay?
Um, just, just.
Strike the question of a personal attack on Senator Favella.
Just, just for the record, I did, I did pause the recording shortly after that question was asked and resumed it after everything was cooled down, so that would not, the question will be on the video, the rest of the responses and the interaction will not be. Yeah, I just wanted to, yeah, that, that, that will be noted on our minutes as well. I just wanted to let you guys know what the video would consist of from that, from that little interaction.
I, I appreciate that. I still would like it as a formal thing from the board itself, because, no offense, it still needs the, from the, it would need the authority to do so, okay? So I still have that motion in front of the, uh, Neighborhood Board, please.
There's a motion and a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Abstained? See none, thank you. Okay, moving on. Sorry, back to US Navy, go ahead.
All right, um, so I, I sent, uh, Chair, I sent the, uh, full report on, um, earlier today. I'll just highlight two of the, um, important things that, uh, we'd like to share with the community. Um, one is that, um, with the, uh, report, we also have, um, the new newsletter that the Navy puts out, it's the Mo'olello. And, uh, it's a two-page newsletter that highlights Navy stories on both Oahu and Hawaii, the, uh, PMRF, uh, facility out there. So I'd like to highlight that, and also, um, on April thirtieth, the Naval Facilities Engineering Systems Command will host a hiring fair, and that's going to be at the Alamoana Hotels Garden Lanai. Uh, so that's going to be going on from nine AM to three PM, three thirty PM on April thirtieth. And, uh, with that, um, I'll, uh, answer your questions.
Okay, any questions from the board? Any question, any question, okay, we got questions from the community, go ahead.
Tara Rojas, so I just wanted to let you know that after we went to the CRI meeting, you know, to really learn.
Tara, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'd like to call a recess right now or ask that a recess be done.
Okay, recess. Okay, recording back on? All right, meeting call back to order, sorry about that. Yeah, Tara, you have a, you have your question?
Yes, so aloha Tara Rojas, I wanted to let you know, you know, Navy, that after discussing learning to use your water site, again, if you can scratch out safe water, just your water site, that the most logical, common sense, and urgent decision and action that needs to happen is not to spend any more time trying to figure out what you should have figured out two years ago, and even previous to that, but to shut down your water line, replace all the piping. That's it. Because any other thing, you're wasting time trying to figure out, you know, what it is, what it is, we don't know, and you're wasting time, because if you do clean one thing, it's, it's stuck in there, like how Susan explained. because if you do clean one thing, it's, it's stuck in there, like how Susan explained. If you're just going to keep using the contaminated water and people are still getting sick. If you didn't watch the CRI meeting, please watch it, you can hear the live testimonies of what they're experiencing. Children and adults, and it's long term, going blind, neurological. So shut down the water line and replace the piping, mahalo.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, go ahead.
Yes, um, Susan Gorman Chang, I'm part of the Community Representation Initiative Committee. And we asked, uh, the Navy to brief you all on Red Hill, whoever comes to Neighborhood Council, I mean Neighborhood Board meetings, to be briefed on Red Hill. So do they brief you on Red Hill? Can you answer any of our questions about Red Hill?
Uh, what's your question specifically, ma'am?
Okay, um, so the 8,000 samples that the Navy has taken over the past several years, now they are casting doubt on, um, the validity of those tests. If that is true, why are they still on the quote "safe waters" website? Why are those still on there if they're saying that they're not accurate?
Uh, so that question is, uh, not specifically about Red Hill, but, um, they are.
The contamination is from Red Hill, they are testing the water because of the contamination of Red Hill.
So the question that you asked is, is about water and about them checking the water. Um, but specifically about Red Hill, it has been defueled. And right now, the Navy Closure Task Force has taken over. And their job is to, um, clean it and remediate it and complete the shutting down. Uh, with regard to the water, um, the Department of Health and the EPA have said that the water is safe to drink. And that is posted on the Safe Waters website.
Okay, well, that's not exactly correct, the EPA is still looking into that, they've done their own testing. So again, the Community Representation Initiative has asked that, uh, the Navy send a representative to every board meeting who can update us on Red Hill and the water safety issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. Moving on to US Army.
All right, good evening Chair, members of the board, members of the community, Major Bonglo, the US Army Representative for tonight. I do have a response to last month's, uh, question in regards to the special use airspace by Mr. Plowman. His question was, can the Army clarify whether the special use airspace is selectively active or continuously active? Our response is, according to FAA approved air navigational charts, the Army's special use airspace is characterized as intermittent by NOTAM. That acronym is N-O-T-A-M, and it stands for Notice to Air Missions. Which means that when the restricted area is active due to training, the Honolulu Control Facility will publish a NOTAM to all tra- air traffic controllers and aviation planners. Various factors influence the activation and deactivation status of this kind of airspace. In the context of Schofield, Range Control designates restricted areas for this purpose, given the planned training on Schofield barracks, um, for example, live fires. All non-military aircraft or civilian aircraft are required to stay clear of that block of airspace. There are no questions to that, I'll move to the regular month announcements, um, so I've got three. So for the April Job Fair, United States Army Garrison Hawaii will be hosting the next fair at the Honolulu Airport, starting at 8:30 and ending at 2:00 PM. This event is open to the public and the job offers and provisional hiring, uh, will be on the day of the actual event. The US Army Garrison published the April Training Advisory for the island of Oahu. The Army will continue training in East Range area with Ranger and Jungle Tactics, that includes small arms blank fire on 12 April, then again from the 21st through the 30th of April during the day only. This training will also include aviation training from the 18th and 19th of April during the day only. Additionally, on Schofield Barracks, there will be artillery and mortar training from the 23rd through the 25th. Day and night live fire, including late evening and early morning hours. There will also be demolitions training on the 19th of April during the day only and multipurpose range complex. Live fire mind clear training on the 26th through the 28th of April during the day and night. And then lastly, just a reminder from last month, there will be prescribed burns on Schofield Barracks from the 15th through the 20th. The prescribed burning helps manage wildfire spread and protects endangered plants and animals by reducing ground fuels. The Army has received approval from the Hawaii State Department of Health's Clean Air Branch and has coordinated with the US Fish and Wildlife Service to ensure all state, federal and Army requirements are met. Any, any questions?
Thank you, any question? Yes, yes, any question from the board? Any questions from the community? You got one, go ahead.
Susan Gorman Chang, what was the issue with the water at Schofield Barracks a few weeks ago?
Are you, um, referring to the, um, water pump, one of our water pumps broke?
Oh, I see, okay.
Yeah. It was the, yeah, the issue was the, the valves in the water pumps broke, which caused the, uh, water systems to fail.
Okay, thank you.
No issues with the water, though.
All right, you got something?
Yes, okay, so Tara Rojas, I guess my theme tonight is knowing your history. And I mentioned it before, but I just wanted to know, are you aware of that there is a big issue with the Army leases being up? And why is this important? Because they were on the verge of returning Makua lands. But they came and decided that they're not going to give that land up because they want to stay here beyond their 2029 leases. Regardless of all the, the negligence and contamination, they want to stay on, and tomorrow there's a big kehia, because last year, yeah, we were at the meeting of BLNR, and then your Army showing up again tomorrow to again discuss land swapping, to, uh, destroy more land, desecrate and contaminate more land. And they want to have, uh, appraisals done tomorrow for this land by BLNR. And so do you realize the effect you're having in Hawaii?
I am not personally familiar with, uh, the land leases being up, but I can ask the question.
So tomorrow, it's going to be a, probably a seven hour long meeting, mahalo.
Okay, Major Bonglo got one online, uh, it says, uh, hand up, Ever Beach resident, go ahead.
Uh, hi, Major Bonglo, Mike Plowman, um, from Ever Beach. I, uh, I got to apologize because I missed the first part of your response. Um, and so, uh, hopefully you're not going to have to repeat yourself, but, uh, the question was do you guys activate your special use airspace, your restricted areas, when you're using just the small arms ranges?
Just the small ranges, is that which?
Yes.
Okay, I can bring that back. Did you hear my response to what I thought your question?
I heard most of it and what I thought I already knew, so that, that usually it's activated and operators are, are notified through notice, notice system, uh, air missions, so, um, I think I heard most of it, I just didn't hear the specific, uh, uh, question answered that was, uh, do you activate it for your small arms ranges?
So the, the response that was given to me is specifically for live fires, I can clarify whether or not that includes small arms live fire.
Okay, thank you very much, I really appreciate your, your following up on all the questions I've ever provided or I've ever posed to you, so thanks very much, appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Major Bonglo. Okay, moving on, is there any representative for case?
Esther, you on?
Nope, okay, moving on to Mayor's rep? Uh, oh. You want to post it? Okay, it'll be in a community drive. Huh? Oh, jeez, did I skip over that whole, oh my goodness, so sorry. Okay, let's go back. I would like to apologize. Yeah, I see that. Okay, let's move on to Hunt, let's go back to six. Hunt VA Clinic, sorry about that, go ahead.
Absolutely no problem, good evening, everybody, I'm Tony Gaston from the Hunt Companies, and I have a quick update for you, uh, some of you may be aware of this, but just this week, the VA Clinic started accepting patients. That's right, so everything turned over to the Veterans Administration, the Daniel K. Akaka Veterans Administration Clinic officially opened. And so everything turned over to them, it's going great. Um, we, if you remember, so a portion of Kamakila was open. So they can get in and out of the parking area very easily. The rest of the roads are still closed, though, because we're still trying to resolve Copahai. Um, unfortunately, the United States DOE just came back to us last week asking questions again, the same questions we thought we had answered last November. But we're going to clear it up and, uh, hopefully get everything resolved so we can get every, the MOU approved between Hunt and the state DOE, then we can get the construction plans approved and actually finish up the work. That's my quick update, any questions?
Thank you, Tom, go ahead.
Uh, I've been on this Neighborhood Board 10 years, and I just want to commend you on, uh, throughout this process, uh, all of your presentations have been professional, they've been concise, they've been on point. Uh, by far and above the best continuous running updates that we have had since I've been on the board over 10 years, thank you, Tony, I sincerely appreciate it.
You're very welcome, and it's a pleasure for me to keep you informed, honestly, I, it, it goes two ways.
Alex, go ahead.
Yeah, I was just curious, I, I didn't hear, did you mention about the, uh, the, the double lane and when that side's going to be open?
Okay, so it ties in because for the city and county, if we open up a portion of it, they're not going to accept it. They want to accept everything at one time, that's why we got to finish Copahai. The reason why we only opened up those two lanes is for emergency reasons, because honestly, I told them, we got to take care of the community, it's a heavily used area, so let's just suck it up and we'll have to spend money to go back in and redo it.
Okay, thank you, any other questions for the board? Any questions for the community? David, go ahead.
Thank you, Tony.
Yes.
Um, that was an awesome event it had out there, so since the VA Clinic now is open, we're going to miss you, or are you planning on still working? What's your plans, what's your future looking like?
No, honestly, I, I will keep coming and in large part is because I know Roosevelt is a heavily used roadway for people who live in the Eva area. And because we are involved with that road a lot, I want to keep you in the loop.
So do you have any projects? Um, any other projects besides this one that you're working on close by?
There are, well, there are other projects being planned right now, the one that is being planned is on the right side or the Diamond Head side of the elementary school, because that's the next parcel that would be coming, so we're looking at now the perimeter roadway surrounding that one, same thing, upgrading FDR to four lanes in addition to the other roadways.
As Clark said, I'm going to miss you if you run away, so stay here.
I won't run away.
We'll just erase VA and you will just put Hunt update.
That's fine, yeah, I, I can't talk about the VA anymore, it's theirs.
Yeah, thank you, uh, seeing no other question, thank you, Tony.
Thanks, everybody.
Okay, moving on to Gentry, uh, Debbie left you online, go ahead, you got some updates? Debbie, you on?
Just in case Debbie is, might take a minute to, to just unmute herself, um, we're just having a little bit of WebEx issues. Um, but yeah, so just, just a second, and I know one of the things she wanted to do was just, um, let you all know that I'll be joining, um, I'm Sunny Rosaria, I just recently started at Gentry, and I'll be, um, assisting Debbie as well, so, um, yes, happy to, I've met some of you today in person, um, and then I'll continue to, I'm seeing you all every month.
Thank you, Sunny. Is Debbie off mute? Uh, can't hear you Debbie yet, just to, if you could hear me.
In case she doesn't come, in case she doesn't come back on, um, I know she didn't have anything to report, um, no general update, um, so, and just in case she doesn't come on, nothing major has happened since last month.
Okay, okay, all righty, we're going to move on. Oh, go ahead.
Uh, I'm going to report on what I did ask her specifically about the stoplight and if she had any, uh, information regarding that. And she did say that, uh, the, the project, I'm talking about the light at, um, Kamakana and Geiger, Roosevelt, Geiger, Roosevelt. Um, she said it is moving forward, so that is good news.
Thank you, moving on to Haseko updates. Anybody from Haseko?
Hi there, I don't have any updates at this time.
Thank you, Lisa. All right, anybody from DR Horton? I know they came in, I think Tracy came last month. I don't think she's on, nope, all right. Moving on. Uh, okay, that's, oh, go ahead, council member District 9, Agitoba.
Thank you Chair, uh, thank you Neighborhood Board, uh, members as well, people in the audience and everybody watching online, uh, I would have loved to be here, uh, in live, well, I'm with you folks, but, uh, I'm on a neighbor island. Uh, anyway, um, I wanted to just take this time out to, uh, send my prayers to the boy and, uh, his Ohana. Um, I am talking with the state senator, area representatives, my colleague, uh, council member Tupola, how we can, uh, you know, work with the DOE to address, uh, the issue of underage kids going to school on e-bikes and I'd like to take this time to remind our community members that e-bike drivers in Hawaii must be at least 15 years old and all e-bike drivers under the age of 16 must wear a helmet. So, uh, please, family members, um, uh, under 15, they shouldn't be on the road, uh, riding e-bikes. Uh, it's, uh, it's against Hawaii state laws. So last Friday, uh, myself, council member Tupola, as well, council member Wire, we introduced resolutions related to the Honolulu Salary Commission to address, uh, the community concerns regarding salary increases for the city elected and appointed officials. If you guys want to take a look at all three resolutions, uh, you can, uh, and that you can do that by logging on to, uh, hnldoc.ehawaii.goc/hnldoc and, uh, you can get that on my, um, my newsletter. Um, I know, that's it, I don't have, uh, much, I would love to take questions right now.
All right, any questions from the community?
Abay, Chair, I have a question.
Hold on, I'm going with the community first. Nothing online, okay, Corey?
A council member, I just want to share my concern. I saw the report that they're planning right now, the leading site for the landfill right now is in Waipahu, Endeva. And it will be impossible to have, prevent runoff. So I can just imagine the absolute pollution will cause for this entire community as runoff from the pollutants hits all these areas. So I just wanted to hear what your thoughts are on this.
I think I made it very, uh, clear, uh, when the news interviewed me, uh, uh, now being the representative of that area, you know, we see 30,000 children and family utilizing that area, I made it very clear to the administration that, uh, uh, they're going to have their hands full if they do, they do decide if that is the only place, but again, it's a long process and I'm, I am, uh, you know, I'm very confident that, uh, we'll find another solution to this.
I could just ask to keep us updated on that one, so we know what we can do.
Absolutely, absolutely, thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Any other questions for the board? Uh, I'd like to follow up on that, uh, council member Toba, I, I echo Corey's sentiments. Uh, you know, I, I coached AYSO over, close to there, my daughter, I, I had a soccer team there, that's, it's a centralized location. I, it's a centralized location, and I just can't see how this could logically make sense to shut that beautiful soccer field down uh, and move it, I, I heard they were going to like plant another one over in Kalalaua or something like that, that just, it just doesn't seem logical to me.
Yeah, I, I have the same sentiments, and again, I will keep you guys update as, updated as, you know, we continue to have, uh, the discussion. Again, it's, you know, the military didn't give the city the okay, um, but that was the site uh, that they recommended, again, you know, uh, we have to go through a lot of hearings. And we know how much the community is in need for soccer parks, uh, playgrounds, uh, baseball fields, so. Yeah, I, I am confident and very. and we know how much the community is in need for soccer parks, uh, playgrounds, uh, baseball fields, so yeah, I, I am confident and very optimistic that, uh, we'll find somewhere else.
Okay, and the, and the second item I have, you mentioned the bills earlier, but you didn't really go into detail. Um, I, I truly believe it's worth mentioning.
Alright.
The highlight of that one bill, so could you, you know which one I'm talking about?
Well, I, I, I have three, one, uh, proposes a ten percent cap on all salary increases for elected officials and appointed officials. The second, I'm just gonna give you a summary, uh, twenty-four dash eighty-six is proposed charter amendments that would require the city council to hold public hearing on any resolution issued by the Salary Commission proposing to alter the salaries of city officials. And my third amendment is would ask voters to change the charter and allow the Honolulu City Council to reject all or portions of the Salary Commission recommendations by a simple majority. I don't know if you remember, uh, but it wasn't a simple majority. And, um, you know.
Right, so the reason why I'm bringing this up is because I, I, I wanted to be publicly notated on, this is on the heels, how much was, and I, this is not presented to you personally, of course, uh, because you came out against the raise, but what was the, what was the most recent raise?
Three percent.
How much?
Three percent, three.
No, 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 the previous one.
Oh, sixty-four, which already passed, gave.
Right, sixty-four percent, and then we're gonna have another one now, three, I thought it was four percent, but, uh, so so that'd be a combined total of seventy percent that would have gone through automatically.
Yeah.
So I, I appreciate you introducing those.
Yeah, making the council member pay go to from one hundred thirteen thousand to one sixteen. But as you is seeing, uh, in the news and in the press, uh, right now, you have majority, including the mayor rejecting the three percent. So, uh, I'm hoping that these resolutions will give an opportunity for the public to testify, so this thing never happens again, um, and.
What could the community do?
Well.
What's the community do?
They, they can, again, they can call, they can testify, that's the biggest thing, you know, uh, when you get people in the community and we saw, and you know, you can read comic, comments on uh, the Honolulu advertiser and how, you know, upset people were. So the best and easiest way is to make testimony and you can call my office, I'll love to give you the link. If not, um, you could come in person and testify.
Yeah, we have a question, wait. Excuse me? When what?
So next week, next week is, um, is our full council. Next week.
Next week what?
I just had it right in front of me, sorry guys, um, minutes. Okay, next week Wednesday, April seventeenth at ten AM.
Mahalo, and I just wanted to say, you know, mahalo for just, you know, speak, for speaking up against that sixty-four percent raise. And I just wanted to, to echo your sentiment and the sentiment even of the board for having a landfill, like I said, central landfill where it used to be parks, how it doesn't make sense and you cannot imagine. So, and that applies to everything where how you cannot imagine that the Navy is not gonna shut down and replace the lines when people are still getting sick or why they're gonna put like a wave pool where there was fresh water and limo, you know, it's, it can apply to everything that just if whatever really pulls you to keep that feeling and that in mind, that it's for all other issues too of just the injustice of it all, what's pono, what's ever. Mahalo, so mahalo no yagi.
Thank you. Okay, I get one real quick, um, just gonna open to, uh, I was gonna mention it to, uh, the other councilmember Tupula, um, if you guys can work, I mean, as a city level to find out funding for Weedensee.
Oh, absolutely.
Put it in a budget instead of Weedensee gotta scratch, beg, fight. You know, if we can find a, a full funding, I don't know, grants or whatever it has to be for where they don't, oh, we don't have to go and you know, go door to door, knocking on doors, letting everybody know who we are again, what we do for the last twenty-five, twenty-four, twenty-five years. Um, if the city can do that, then we can work on a state side. If they can also find a way, I mean, you know, back in two thousand eleven, it was funded by the, um, Department of Justice before that. And then we, I mean, then lost that back in two thousand eleven and became our own entity, but if the city can do that and hopefully the, the state can find ways to keep these programs running in our community. You heard that we, even, ever Weedensee just said they're gonna expand to Kalailoa. And it's, it's still with the funding that they have in hand and with officers that they have, so.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, what if I can do the advocate to make sure that, uh, this program stays afloat? I was there when I was, uh, growing up in Kalihi when Weedensee first, uh, started, uh, in Kalihi. So, uh, yeah, I know, I know, uh, the purpose and I know, uh, what it brings to the community, so whatever I can do on my part, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much and thank you for all you do, okay, take care.
Have a nice evening, buddy.
Hi Chair.
Sorry, Cory, go ahead.
Uh, councilmember, this is an issue that we've talked about before, um. You know, the Westlock used to be done every six months. And now it's been five years since the Parks Department has cut back the brush. And I just want to know if there's any update you can give, whether this is just fully dead that they're not gonna do it and then we need to inform the, uh, Westlock Fairways and Westlock Estates communities that it's gonna happen? Or if there is some policy that needs to change or some funding, I just hope you can give me an update on that.
Yeah, I will do that, um, but yeah, you're right, right? We go in, we help clean, uh, but there's no follow-up. Right, so I'll make sure to, to talk to Cal and, uh, moving forward, you know, how we can, uh, make sure that area is maintained. I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, take care.
Take care.
Moving on to, uh, DOE, anybody?
Want to vote a chair?
Wait.
Uh, as I stated earlier, I'm entering my tenth year on this board. Uh, Mitch, uh, Chair, I believe you were with me, uh, over that, that timeframe and maybe one other member, uh, on this board. When the previous complex area superintendent attended these meetings representing the Department of Education, often the principals, some of the principals would join her. Uh, she is now Deputy Superintendent, uh, of Hawaii Schools, uh, Ms. Heidi Armstrong. Uh, she represented our district well, she got us resources, uh, we work together to uplift our community. Again, I would like to point out that the current complex area superintendent continues to not attend these meetings and I think it becomes more and more evident if we want to put out or, or get a policy passed that the, the, the schools in the area, they, the principals can shall we say outlaw having the e-bikes on the campus, that will go a long ways. And I realize there's a lot of parents out there that think the e-bikes are not a big deal, but they are a big deal as has been evidenced by today's tragic events. So again, I would like to point out that I am still trying to get the complex area superintendent for the Campbell Capole complex to come to these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex, go ahead.
Thank, thanks, John. I'm wondering, so you, you've written to her, her on multiple occasions, right? Him, excuse me, on multiple occasions, right? And, and no response? And so I, that, by that question and then if that's the case, and I know I always hate to defer like resolutions, but should we write a resolution about, I mean, what should we do? You know what I mean? What are your thoughts?
Uh, uh, I'll do a resolution. I, I've asked our elected official, in fact, I was talking to Senator Favela, he's told me that he is, uh, directly passed on my words and I've asked him personally to attend these meetings, so, uh, yeah, I'll put together a resolution. Thank you, Alex, good idea.
Thank you. Moving on to Governor's Rep, Perry, you on? Okay, if he jumps on, we'll go back. Moving on to, uh, HDOT, Hawaii Department of Transportation. Please Fernon. Quarterly report. Not yet. Okay, Senate District Nineteen, Henry Aquino.
Good luck Chair, board members, members of the community. My name is Nastan Yisay and I will be representing Senator Aquino this evening. Um, I also stand by my report as well, thank you.
Thank you. Any question for the Senator from the board? Or community? Seeing none, thank you very much. Moving on, careful, moving on to Senate District Twenty-One, Senator Mike Gabbert.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair and Honorable Board and Community Members. I'm Nanook Dennis, Senator Gabbert's Community Liaison. And the Senator sent his best wishes to you and your Ohana and invites you to his May Listen Story Community Meeting. Um, the date is to be determined, but it will still be from nine to ten AM at the Capole High School Teacher's Lounge. Uh, you can also ju- join via Zoom. And you can email sendgabbard@capitol.hawaii.gov for a link to the meeting and to find out the exact date of the meeting in May. The Senator attended the Daniel K. Akaka Department of Veterans Affairs Community Based Outpat- outpatient clinic grand opening on April fifth. Uh, the multi-specialty Aloha Vets Clinic is located a few hundred yards from Makai of Costco on Roosevelt Boulevard. The hundred and twenty million, eight, eighty-nine thousand square foot facility, thousand, sorry, square foot facility will provide specialized care for eighty, eighty-seven thousand veterans who live on Oahu, including primary care, mental health, audiology, physical and occupational therapy, a dental and prosthetic service laboratory, diagnosis services, special care, x-rays and pharmacy. Also AES Hawaii, uh, West Oahu had its blessing and grand opening on April ninth. And as a partner of UH West Oahu, AES worked with, uh, UH to provide a holistic solution to a number of challenges. The twelve point five back, uh, projects aligns with UH policies and helps to contribute sust- sustainability goals, advances local agriculture through partnership with local agriculture operators and provides a valuable source of revenue to UH. I'll link to the Senator's March, uh, newsletter in the chat. And feel free to reach out to Senator Gabbert if you have, uh, if you need any help in any way. I'm happy to bring back any questions to the Senator.
Thank you. Any question for the board? Any question for the community? Seeing none, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to Representative District Thirty-Nine, Elijah Parrot. Moving on to Representative District Forty, Representative Rose Martinez.
Chair, can I chime in? I don't know if that call point of order, but I wonder.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to mention, so, um, I think Representative Martinez or any of her, her office hasn't been present here for at least six months, I want to say more than that. And I know a lot of that, you know, we've been dealing, talking about PRTF, that's in her re- in her district and it just, that's a real concern for me. I think that, you know, these conversations aren't always nice, but that's a part of being a representative for these communities, right? So I don't know if that's something that you can contact their office or, I don't know, you know, I haven't done it, I'll be honest with you. I had interactions with them when this was happening, but why, why aren't they, they're not showing up? They're the only representative, government representative of this whole list that hasn't shown up in six plus months. And so I don't know, I want to express my concern with that, especially with a lot of the stuff happening there and see if, I don't know if I, I should personally reach out, but I'm wondering if there's a protocol for that as well.
She's all our representatives as well, so. Yeah. Okay. We'll take that into consideration and we'll, uh, what I'll do is I'll send an email to our, to our office and follow up. Okay, moving on, you know, we have some time, I think, right? We, nine thirty-seven, okay. Gonna quickly read the mayor's reports, report. I can probably go through this in four minutes. Okay, hi, now, it's the month, uh, highlights from the mayor's newsletter, newsletters, Mayor Blangardi delivers a twenty twenty-four state of the city address to a PAC Mission Memorial Auditorium crowd, Mayor Blangardi and members of the Cabinet Leadership uh, team, uh, host the first two town hall meetings of twenty twenty-four. The city signs an agreement with the Department of Health to open the behavioral health, uh, crisis hub in Ivalae. The Royal Hawaiian Band moves to a new home in Waikiki Vista. An important traffic update for the residents of Lani Kai area, the April twenty-fourth. Well, an important traffic update, oh, I don't know what is that? Yeah, it says meet your, uh, Mayor Blangardi and his team will be at the road to visit communities around Oahu, their eight town halls, so uh, April eleven was Wahewa, April eighteen was Keiliulani Middle School, April twenty-fifth, well, Manoa District Park Gymnasium. They didn't have one in Capole. Just, I don't see that one anymore. Okay, hold on, upcoming, eleven, eighteen, twenty-fifth, twenty-two, Onanaki Bono School in the second. May sixteen, Waileua Elementary School, May twenty-third, Cocohead District Park Gymnasium, May thirtieth, Aula Elementary School and June sixth would be at, uh, Canoe Lani Elementary School. Uh, department issues and follow-up signage inconsistencies, board members share the consistent concerns regarding the inconsistencies with the road signage along Pippi Road. Uh, kid of one, so DTS previously responded to the matter, there, there are only two no parking signs at any time along Pippi Road. They say the same? Oh, they seem dying, I think the mic. Um, it's also appeared that the city's right away and that the backside, side area such as uh, no parking anytime signs, they retain the minimum, uh, lateral offset requirement. You know, we, we talked to Kehau about this, this is not about moving or we're gonna, wanna move it off the sidewalk and into the grass, hopefully they get that correct. Um, speeding concerns, residents shared their concerns and recent speeding, uh, observed at the end of Four Weaver Road by Evolpoolo District Park. Uh, this area is outside DTS jurisdiction, please refer to the Hawaii State Department of Transportation, HDOT, either directly through the board, governor's representative. Handicap ramp installation, resident Steven Kimura shared his concern about there being no handicap ramps for the residents, uh, on the corner of Hanukai and Ikuulani Streets. Department of Design and Construction City has a program to install curb ramps as soon as funding allows with a, a approved, uh, curb ramp, request made by qualified individuals with disabilities at locations not otherwise scheduled for improvement. A copy of the curb ramp request, request for maybe downloaded from the city's website. Um, money to download. Order and sixteen point six concern, residence Francis Tapiz shared their order and sixteen six bill. She asked for section three of the ordinance, uh, could be removed, so there is no repeal date. Uh, Honolulu Police Department, unfortunately, the Honolulu, Honolulu Police Department cannot modify or change any repeal dates uh, to bills and this should be forwarded to the Honolulu City Council for consideration. Yeah, thank you. Now, going back to committee reports, parks, do we have any committee reports?
I have a real quick one, I was, I was gonna give this report at, at the last meeting and that was that I had, after our quarterly, if you will, or every three or four months, Parks Committee meeting, we, I had spoken with Kehau about the status of the irrigation project at Onaulu Beach Park, so that's the irrigation project that's gonna go in the large field down at the end by the final bathroom. And she said that that contract was out to bid and so I was gonna try to get a, an update from her for this meeting and I did not, so I, I was gonna ask her, but she's not here today. Um, so I'll try to get that for the next meeting and that also, that design and planning was working on designing the the bathroom for, for Onaulu Beach Park as well with a shower and, and, uh, we need to get the status on that because we don't want that to not happen before funding lapses. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Education?
Saturday, May fourth, twenty twenty-four, from four to nine PM at the Waikai. Come out and join the Saver Fest, it's gonna be fun, food, it's gonna be a great event. Uh, come out and support James Campbell High School, thank you. And more.
Transportation. Umpel.
I'm sorry, I, I have nothing. I attended the meeting, this last meeting, but, um, I have nothing to report.
Thank you, John. Are you still down on there or you're up and over?
Uh, I am in Indianapolis right now, uh, at four o'clock AM and, uh,
Thanks for sticking with us, John. Alright. Yeah, moving on to public safety, community outreach, homeless outreach. Economic development. Economic development. Climate change.
No report.
Thank you. Foreign affairs.
Chair, can I, can I make a comment?
Go ahead, Alex.
I'm just curious, uh, I don't, I also don't know the protocol on this, so apologize. So if we have a number of committees that never meet, is the idea just to leave them there just in case they ever do? Or what's the point of having all these committees if they never do anything? Okay.
Alex, that's, that's a great question. Um, so Trey was talking earlier about sunshine law. There is an exemption to sunshine law. So if something pops up, you can schedule an emergency meeting, but it's, you have to get the permission through the office. There's a certain protocol that you have to do. So if you can't get the agenda out in time, there's, there are steps to do that. So, you know, it's better to have a standing committee and then just, you know, jump through a couple hoops to, to get an agenda out than to not have the, the committee.
Military affairs. Seeing no other announcements, next regular board meeting scheduled for Thursday. No, it's not Thursday, it's in May, next month. Okay, next month is a recess, guys, okay? And I will, also June, I mean, I mean, the board wanted a candidate's forum. Is that what you guys really want? We're gonna have a short meeting in the beginning, we're like less than an hour. Let's go to public safety, first responders, board administration. We might have two presentations, quick ones, and the residents' community concerns. And then we'll adjourn the meeting and roll into, um, candidates forum. But I need someone who can chair the candidates forum, anyone? No, he's, he's, Trey, are you, are you a candidate? Are you running for any? No? Do you wanna, do you wanna chair the candidates forum? Uh, thank you Trey for chairing the candidates forum for us.
I will chair the candidates forum.
Thank you very much.
I could help Trey if he needs assistance.
Oh, thank you, Jenna. Hey Jenna, you gotta come down now.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
I, I just had a question on, on the functionality of this. So do you inform all the typical people that show up to not show up and then say, and then inform all the candidates? I just was wondering how it works.
Yeah. Yeah, because they'll look at the agenda as well and they'll see the agenda and then, yeah. So, okay, got that cleared up. So next regular board meeting will probably be Ju- oh, not even regular, July. We'll meet in June, short meeting, but then I, uh, let's see, June, what is it? Sorry. June 13th, all right? Uh, seven o'clock, virtually WebEx and in person, Evo Beach Public Library, regular board meeting minutes broadcast every first and Saturday, Sunday at 6:00 p.m. and every second and fourth Friday at 10:00 a.m. on O'Leiloo Digital Channel 49. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for coming.